Twenty-fourth, 2024, at 7:30 PM. And I would like to call to order the meeting of the Lisle Community Unit School District 202 Board of Education. Mrs. Sims, if we could please have a roll call.
Sure. Ms. Foster?
Present.
Mr. Nagler?
Here.
Mr. Lesniak?
Here.
Ms. D. Dominico?
Here.
Mr. Helderly?
Here.
Ms. Allman?
Here.
And Ms. Sims is here.
Okay, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on our agenda is the Lisle 202 mission statement, which is to provide our learning community with the essential education skills and experiences for future success. So we'll keep those thoughts in mind as we meet this evening. Next on the agenda is the, item four is a public hearing for the waiver on the annual publication of the annual statement of affairs in a local newspaper. And this was discussed in our finance meeting. And for the waiver request, the public hearing is for the board's waiver request to discontinue publishing the annual statement of affairs in the local newspaper. The administration is seeking this waiver as it allows the district to save approximately 2,000 annually and with a minimum of $10,000 savings over the waiver's five-year period. The district will continue to post this report on our website, which reaches a greater number of community members than the local newspaper. In addition, perusal copies are available to the public upon request. Are there any members of the board who have further comments or questions regarding the waiver request? At this time, the Board of Education will open the public hearing for any members of the public that would like to make oral comments or submit written comments regarding the waiver request. Please realize that in accordance with the board policy, the board will not be addressing the comments or questions during the hearing, but we would like to hear the comments. Do any members of the public have comments regarding the waiver? Okay, hearing no comments, I will conclude the public hearing portion of the meeting, and that is at 7:37. Thank you.
Pam, I believe we might need a roll call vote.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, to open, to close it? Yes, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting at 7:37.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and we can just do a roll, we'll do a roll call if we would, please?
Okay. Did, was that Greg that seconded?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. D. Dominico?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye, and Ms. Allman?
Aye, thank you. Thanks for that reminder, Dave. Okay, next on the agenda is item five, which is our public comment. And Diane Myrna, you had public comment. If you'd like to come up to the podium, welcome.
My name is Diane Myrna, and I have lived in Lisle for 48 years. As you all know, the Illinois State Board of Education mandates data reporting requirements for every public school district in the state. This school district submitted data is compiled and released on the Illinois Report Card website each fall. The website receives over 1 million public views per month. According to the IRC, Lisle has the lowest public or pupil admin ratio of all the pre-K and K through 12 districts in the Chicago area, excluding the Chicago Public Schools. 202 has nearly 50% more administrators than the neighboring and often compared Westmont's District 201. And I'm here to question, what does the academic achievement results that these administrators are delivering? According to the IRC, less than 50% of the 202 students perform to state standards. How are these poor results serving our students and their parents? Where is the administrator accountability for this poor performance? Few data points, Lisle never reduced their administrator head count when they merged Tate Woods and Shejir. There were four when you had the two schools. There's four now with one school. Why? When Lisle High School had nearly 800 students, it had three administrators. Now, with just over 400 students, you have five administrators. With four administrators departing, slated to depart in June, why isn't the board proactively reorganizing these administrator responsibilities and thus reducing the taxpayer burden? It's my understanding, as we talk tonight, you're going over your budget process for the next year. Lisle 202 should have a pupil administrator ratio that is no smaller than Westmont. I request that the board eliminate these four administrator positions and the associated funding in the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myrna. She does request a follow-up conversation with me and Dr. Philippiac. We'll meet. One of the things that we talked about at a prior meeting was that some inaccuracies on the report card of what is reported for the number of administrators. Certainly, at the high, the high school was one example, so we'll have that in conversation.
Five?
Pardon me?
Five?
At the high school? Yes, there are. It was reported on the report card as eight, I believe. So that's, yeah.
Five versus 400 students versus 800 students.
Okay. And we'll have that in our conversation, so, thank you. Okay, there's no other public comment. We'll go on to the action items. Administration has asked to pull 6A7 for further discussion in closed session. Some of the board members had specific questions about the reasons for resignations, and as those are personnel-related, those will be explained in closed session also. Does anybody else want to pull anything further?
Pam, I have a couple. Can we pull 6A4D, 6A5, 6A9, and 6A10?
Okay, could you repeat those again? 6A4D?
6A4D.
Uh huh.
6A5, 6A9, and 6A10.
Why don't we have those discussions regarding the ones that you asked? Does anybody else have any that they would like to pull? Okay, Kate, you want to, we can talk about those, and then we'll put them up for vote.
Yes, 6A4D and 6A5, it's the same, just bringing the conversation back to what we had last meeting about the replacement of the high school principal. And I was just wondering, you guys said you would look into the data that was going into the Illinois Report Card and the ratios, because they're still coming up pretty high. What was the?
So Nancy, excuse me, Nancy Van Bulkenberg, who uploads all of that data, the Illinois Board of Education, called them and said, "It doesn't appear that the administrator number is right. It's listed as 17 instead of 12." And so, the Illinois Board of Education looked to see how we coded our department heads, and even though we coded them as non-administrative, they said at the state level that those are still treated in their system as administrator, even though they're not administrators. We said, "What are our options?" They said, "You can change it for the 23-24 school year and code them as something more teacher and not as department heads." And so that's what we've done, but there was no way for them to fix that in the 22-23. So, our administrator ratio is overstated by a third. So instead of having 19, it's actually 12.
But is that for the high school alone, or what about the elementary school? Because that's still coming in as a, as a high number as well.
The categories at the elementary level are still reflected accurately. It was at the high school level that all the department heads, all seven of them, were treated as administrators.
Did we look at consolidating these with two leaving?
Most definitely. We believe with close to 800 students at that building, it's really necessary you have a dean, and the number of special ed students that you have, we really need somebody focused specifically on those special ed students.
So I, after the last meeting, went through the websites for Westmont, for Wheaton, Wheaton North High School, and Donners Grove 99, and they have all the same positions that we have. So I don't understand what this call for having too many administrators is.
Wheaton North High School has over 2,000 students.
I get that, but Westmont isn't. They had the exact same positions as us.
Yeah, so when you look at the ratio, it's like the number?
But Westmont has the same amount of students as us.
Then why is their number showing up differently on there?
Because it's coded different. He just said that.
Okay, but we're talking about the elementary school now.
The elementary school, four administrators, like that's, that the principal, a vice principal, a psychologist, and what is it, a nurse?
Just to be clear, the four administrators, you would have your principal, you would have an assistant principal for curriculum and instruction, you have an assistant principal for student services, AKA special ed students, psych, social worker, and then you have a dean. And so I felt like in past years, we had welcomed the opportunity for any administrator who would like to shadow during a day, and I think for those of you that took advantage of it, it was quite insightful to see, to manage a building, you know, whatever level it might be, just the amount of activity on a given day.
And given I've had this experience at the high school, I can't reiterate those four positions. You need four different individuals sitting in during meetings that day, with the principal, goes through the dean, assistant principal of social services, and curriculum, curriculum is its own specialty. I think for us to find somebody who has multiple skills across those four roles and would have the time during the day is an impossibility. And I think if we want more research on that, I'm sure there might be other articles saying, let's say, proper number of students at a elementary of 700, 800 students. And I believe when we did that, the equity-based funding, evidence-based funding, I think that four matches evidence-based funding, if I recall properly.
I don't recall the exact number, but when you look at the high school specifically, you have an athletic director, you know, you have a lot of programs within the school in terms of athletics and co-curricular, more athletics, and he needs to coordinate all that. So I don't see how you'd eliminate it, but one thing we have done for the next upcoming school year is we had a part-time stipend for somebody to do at the junior high, and Tom has said he was willing to take that this next school year and see if he could do the high school and the junior high. So that's one of the things we plan to do. When you look at the actual building, you've seen the dean, there's not a dull moment in the entire day. Unfortunately, at high school level, a lot of students make a lot of bad decisions, and so he's meeting one-on-one with each of those students. When you have your assistant principal for student services, those are more the, "I think we need to have a conversation, I think you need to get back on track," or "This is going well." And so those, that person, again, I've not seen without a student in her office. And then the curriculum person, she's the one that has to lead those department head meetings. She's the one that has to be at those weekly department head meetings. She needs to be in classrooms doing observations. She needs to be the one that's making sure instructional practice is aligned with what we want, and also that our curriculum is viable and rigorous the way we'd want it to be. So, to eliminate any of those positions, as small as our school is, somebody would either have to do it or it wasn't done. And times have changed, back when we used to have 800, 900, it was not the rigor and expectations we have today.
I think it wasn't, the needs were very different of the students. You know, when we're reviewing board policy tonight, when we read over 7180 and 7190, just the level of content, just to control, you know, the needs of the students during the day, just the things to watch for, the monitoring, very different than it was before. So it would be difficult to compare to what the high school was years ago, or what any of the schools were. And what we're looking at, the elementary right now, you know, we had two principals, obviously we combined the two, but the size is one of the biggest factors there. The dean was necessary because of all the needs of the students, and we've heard the stories. You know, we assessed that position when we renewed it, what was it, over, well, a year ago, I think it was? I think both those positions, when they came up a year ago, we looked back, what are the needs of the students? What are the needs at the school? And that we made that decision, so.
So I would continue to have the invitation that if somebody would like to spend a few hours in the building and see what a day in the life, it's one thing to do math or read something in terms of a ratio, but it's something else to spend a few hours in the building and just see what the students need and how we support them to better understand what happens with specifically administrators, but also teachers and every other position in our building. Just spend a few hours, and I think you might see things differently.
Right, and on the math side, I think we always try to look for ways to save our taxpayers paying taxes, right, as much as we can. Cost of living just goes up. When you look at one administrative position with benefits, there's a rough number, about $150,000. Our budget's $43 million. When you divide those numbers, that's .35% of our budget. To really move the needle for our taxpayers, we have to do a tremendous amount of more cutting. 80% of our cost is labor, so it's going to have to be more, if we want to put a dent in taxes, it's going to be a combination of reducing staff, increasing class sizes, not taxing to CPI, but then we should expect within seven to 10 years, a referendum for the deficit spending that'll have happened.
And decreasing opportunities, AP being one prime example.
And as you do that, what's the impact on the students when you put all those factors in there and the risk to it? So when I look at .35% of our budget going down, I'd rather have that go toward the students.
And there's only a small window to affect these students, because at the high school level, they're only there four years. So if you start cutting programs, it's not like we'll get back to you later. It's done and over for them.
I think we all need to have budget discussions where we don't bring up cutting AP classes. I feel like that's the first thing that goes every time we have one of these. Just putting that out there. This was about an elementary school assistant principal, and now we're going to cut a high school AP class. It just always goes that way.
But that's the point, where do you cut, you know? And if you?
It's where the money is.
I don't think, you know, given the, a lot of the social-emotional issues going on with our students, I wouldn't cut, you know, try to merge a director of student services with another role like curriculum. I think our kids need our social, our student services more than ever these days, so I wouldn't even cut that. And curriculum, curriculum's changing. I mean, we went from, we flipped-flopped from SAT, ACT to SAT, now back to ACT. So now curriculum's got to go back to the drawing board in high school and do that. Fortunately, we've been really good at staying with iReady, which is awesome as a tool, but we're trying to figure out how is that aligned to IAR, which I know you guys are working on, going, what's, we were told that would help, and it hasn't, and I know that's on your list of things you're doing. So, again, curriculum is a lot more specialized these days to go through all those tools. So I'd hate to try to get that role spread against something that's a really different discipline.
I'm asking if we're using all of our resources the most efficient way possible, and I think it's our responsibility to ask that and to see that.
Are we using all our resources?
I'm just talking about these positions. We have a lot of administrators. Like, when you look, we do have a lot, when I look at Illinois Report Card compared to other districts. Randy and I disagree, it seems like, by, but looking at other schools of similar size in other districts, it does seem like we have a lot. And I'm just, I'm not comfortable with supporting that, and I will take you up on your opportunity to shadow at these schools. I'm happy to shadow every one of the positions.
I would too.
Can you remind us, what has the, how much has the student population increased over the past three years, approximately?
Most of the increases happen at the elementary level. When we opened the building, we had at the elementary building about 630 students, and now we're getting close to 800.
Okay.
The junior high, we've seen a slight increase, but the bubble's coming through. If you recall, when you've added additional teachers, it was a sixth grade at kindergarten, and the next year was a first grade, so on and so forth, so the bubble is coming.
So that building population's increased about 20% in the last three years, approximately?
That, that sounds right, but there's a lot of variables. First of all, to have a dean on staff, that's the person that makes sure everyone gets safely into the building and leaves the building. That's a huge part of that position. Someone has to supervise the lunch, so you've kind of lost the morning middle and end of day. And then during the day, on any given day, there's multiple students who really are breaking down. They need support, they need to connect them with whoever it is in the building. So when we look at the replacement of the dean, I wouldn't be comfortable in assuring the safety of your building without having a dean. I also feel that you need somebody whose prime focus is on the special ed students to be able to work with the special ed staff. And so, as you know, we've had a resignation this year, but we think we found an incredible candidate, and so we need them to be meeting with those special ed staff, psych, social worker, speech, special ed teachers, particularly because you've approved an additional section for the self-contained 3 through 5. And so, I think there's a lot of pride in the school to have had a self-contained for kindergarten, first and second, but I think it's admirable that you've supported 3, 4, and 5, because we have students going to our special ed cooperative that would probably be better served in-house, and we're hoping to bring them back. We have some students that are struggling within the regular classroom that really need this program to hopefully either find success there or maybe work their way back into the regular program, but someone needs to manage that, someone needs to oversee that to make sure it's successful. So, tonight, we're asking you to approve a new dean, we're asking to approve an assistant principal for student services. We think we've got two great candidates, but these are just words until you get out to the building and you see the students and you see what happens day to day. So thank you for your willingness to come out and meet with people at the building.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, who should I connect with to coordinate that?
You can, you can connect with me.
Okay.
I think we had presentations by both the dean and the assistant principal for student services at the elementary school, talking about their day, talking about some of the needs of the school, and I think that was before you were on the board, and so that might be something that you'll, you'll have the opportunity to see with the.
Yeah, I'd prefer to go shadow it.
Yeah, no, I think it would be impactful. Okay, anything else? So we've got 6AD, and then still pulling 6A5, we're pulling 7. Okay, so those, I mean, we've discussed those, we'll still have the vote on the approval of the elementary dean, unless anybody else has questions, and also on 6A4D. And then you also wanted to pull 6A9?
Yes, and 6A10, both regarding the renovations.
Uh huh. Okay, and what would you, you want to discuss it first, or just a separate vote?
Not as much discussion, but just a separate vote, and we still haven't had facilities master planning or revision 202, and I'm not comfortable supporting either of these.
Okay. Anybody else have any, any questions or anything?
I have a, I have a comment on 6A10. I guess would be a good time to bring that up. So I had the opportunity to go to LES then in May, and I joined Dr. Philippiac and checked out the space that was proposed to be remodeled, and he explained all the subtle nuances of things. So it's actually kind of cool, because it happened to be the last day of LES 2, so the fifth graders were walking out, and it was really great to see the families. But I understand, you know, having the, through having the opportunity even more so, how that need to have a self-contained space and that additional gifted space in that building, because it's always hopping. And especially for young ones, to have a concentrated area to give them the focus that they need to grow, you know, into their, you know, their academics is really impactful. So, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Great, okay.
That was it?
Excellent, okay. So, I'm going to, it's going to be, we're going to have to spend a little time going back and getting the motions for those other items, but does anybody have any other comments on the consent agenda?
Mrs. Allman, I did receive a question, sorry to interrupt, but I did receive a question regarding the AP check register. There were some light items that said, the description was cellphone, and then they had a timeframe along the side, so it's typically for a quarter, basically, three calendar months. And so the question was, is clarifying what those amounts are for? And so that's a cellphone reimbursement for employees whose job duties require them to need a mobile phone, because we need to be able to get in touch with them frequently for work-related items. It might be in the evening, it might be for emergencies, and so that's the cellphone reimbursement that they're paid.
Just, do most districts reimburse for cellphones for employees?
So districts can do, I guess, two things. One, they can just buy them a separate cellphone and pay for not only the device, but also for the cellphone service, and then everybody carries around two phones. Or some districts choose to go this route and just reimburse them for a portion of their costs. We do not pay for anybody's cellphone, we only pay for the plan because we need to be able to get in touch with them by phone or by text for work-related items. So this covers their business-related costs for that.
But one of those two is covered by other school districts for their employees, so if I was in 99, I would have both of those, one of those, I'd either have a phone or a reimbursement.
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, we'd have to do a survey. I know we did a survey at one point, and there were a number of districts that do that, but I don't know every single district and whether Donners Grove does that or not, but it's not uncommon for people to have their cellphones reimbursed or get a cellphone provided by the district.
How many employees are we talking about?
Ballpark. 10 to 15, maybe? I mean, it's your.
So it's not every employee?
No, it's not every employee.
No, that's, I just want to clarify that.
Yes. No, it's, it's, there's a, there's criteria for who is eligible based on the needs and when that might be necessary.
Okay, let's give a try here for the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda 6A1, board meeting minutes, 6A2, payroll pay orders, 6A3, vendor pay orders, 6A4, personnel, 6A4A, summer worker employment, 6A4B, substitute teacher pay rate, 6A4C, administrative resignation, 6A4E, certified employment, 6A4F, certified leave request, 6A4G, certified resignation, 6A4H, classified employment, 6A4I, classified resignation, 6A4J, extra-duty employment, 6A4K, extra-duty resignation, 6A6 collective, six, yes, 6A6, collective bargaining agreement with the Classified Employees Association of Lisle for 2024, 2025, 6A8- of Lisle for 2024, 2025, 6A-8, Working Cash Fund Interest, or Transfer Resolution, Interest Transfer Resolution. And we're pulling 9 and 10, 6A-11, Fiscal Year 2025 Tentative Budget, and 6A-12, Waiver Request Submissions, Annual Statement of Affairs, Newspaper Publication, 6A-13, Approval of the Lisle High School Birding Club. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Sims, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye, and Ms. Allman?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, going back to 6A-4D, Administrative Employment, LES Assistant Principal for Student Services. I will entertain a motion that the Board of, Board of Education approves Mrs. Hannah Baker as the Assistant Principal for Student Services at Lisle Elementary School, beginning July 1, 2024.
So moved.
Can we have a second?
Second.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Mr.? Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Abstain.
Ms. Sims is an aye. Ms. Allman?
Aye, thank you. All right, approval of elementary dean. Let me go back to that one, 6A-5, to get the motion. I think I just strolled right past it. I did. Okay. And this is approval for Lisle Elementary Dean. I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve Mr., Ms. Kristin, is it Petrella, as the Elementary Dean of Students at Lisle Elementary School, beginning July 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Abstain.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye. Ms. Allman?
Aye, thank you. All right, 6A-9 is the resolution to transfer funds for the Educational Fund to the Capital Projects Fund.
So moved.
Oh, just a second, I got to read it first.
Oops, sorry.
But save that thought. I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution directing the school district treasurer to transfer $750,000 from the Educational Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Am I on the right one? No, that's the working, yeah, that is it.
Okay.
Okay. So now you would like to?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, second. Okay. Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Nay.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye. Ms. Allman?
Aye, thank you. And let's see, item 10, down to that. 6A-10 is the Pepper Construction Project Work Order Number 02, Lisle Elementary School Office Renovations. 6A-10, and that motion is that the Board of Education approve Pepper Construction Project Work Order Number 2 for the office renovation at Lisle Elementary School for an estimated final contract cost of $280,113.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Nay.
Ms. Sims is an aye. Ms. Allman?
Aye, thank you. Okay, it brings us to item 7, which is our financial information. The Board acknowledges receipt of the following reports, 7A Financial Report and 7B Treasure Report. Are there any questions from the Board on those two reports? No questions, we will accept as presented. Next is our discussion items on Policy 115.
All right. So starting with, I've got everybody's feedback, starting with Policy 4:70, Resource Conservation. We had three board members saying, accept changes as presented. We had one grammar change. It's, this is up in board books, if everybody wanted to look. In paragraph 3, the sentence, "And B include investigation of the feasibility of potential markets for other recyclable materials that are present in the district's waste system." I think feasibility should be feasibility with an I, or feasibility, not feasibly, in that sentence.
Is this 470?
Yes. So in the third paragraph, there's the word feasibly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Feasibility. I'm fine?
Fine, I'm good.
Change?
Yeah.
And then we did one question to the administration. How often are these procedures renewed by the district? Administration responded, no current formal schedule. The Board should advise if this is expected. So any further discussion of anything we want from the administration on this?
No, no, nothing.
Okay. All right, moving on to Policy 5:130, Responsibilities Concerning Internal Information. Four board members indicate accept changes as presented. We did have one question. What are the procedures for safeguarding internal information in our district? Administration has replied, staff who have access to social security number complete training on privacy. The district follows record destruction protocols. All staff complete the GCN training student records, which helps staff understand what is considered a student record and ways to safeguard this information. Employees also annually receive Board Policy 715, Student and Family Privacy Rights, which help them better understand their objection, their obligations as an employee in protecting this information. Any?
Sounds good. I don't know who.
So you will accept those changes, and the last one will accept those changes with the word change.
Great.
Moving on to Policy 5:200, Terms and Conditions of Employee and Employment and Dismissal. Four board members accepted changes as presented. We had one board member, "Prepress plus comments to our job descriptions and educators of PE, Music, and Visual Arts require educator license endorsements in those areas." Administration has responded, yes. So accept changes as presented?
Yep.
Great. Okay. Okay, made that update. Okay, the next one is Policy 6:140, Education of Homeless Children. Four board members indicate accept changes as presented. There were no other additional questions to administration. Are we good? Except as presented?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving right along. The next, the next set of policies are all under review and monitoring. So every, X number of years, we go through every policy at some point. So Policy 2:70, Vacancies on the Board of Education, Filling Vacancies. Four members, board members accept changes as presented. There were no questions to administration. Anybody, any discussion or accept changes as presented?
I just had one question. Sorry, this was a late entry. But this acceptance of a second public office as incompatible with board membership, how do we define what's incompatible? Because I looked through the ILCS code, and I couldn't find anything on that.
We have to look it up each time. We have had this come up. One instance, the Park District is not compatible. The library is compatible. So it has to, each individual compatibility issue has to be researched. But there's, there is actually guidelines on.
Do we have the guidelines for reference?
I mean, I just happened to look them up and then contacted. So, I mean, we don't, but we can find that if, if need be. I mean, it just depends on, there's, they could have other, like they could have the village, they could have, so it's kind of unique to whatever compatibility issue comes up, I would say, rather than listing out each one. But that's just mine.
Should we say reviewed with each? I'm just, there could be people who have two. So do we just need to say we review it, or? I just wouldn't want someone to fight it and say, well, I didn't know from your policy that it wasn't compatible, because it wasn't listed. Is it, I agree with you, like the Park District, we have shared agreements. You can't be on both boards. That would be a conflict of interest. So I don't know if we need to get into that level of detail. I could see how someone would want to do more than one board.
Yeah, it's only, well, it's come up twice in.
I don't, I don't think we control that at all. That's more, you would have to go to the election at DuPage County to be able to say, I was thinking about running for this additional office. Can I? So even if we said yes, even if we said no, it really doesn't matter what we think. They really need to go to the election board.
Do we need to put, like, reference in there? It's great that it's hired by an election board. I feel like that makes it a lot easier for us. But do we need to say per the DuPage County Election Board?
Is there any references in that policy at the bottom that says legally what?
There is. It's 105 ILCS 5-10, which is super lengthy and detailed. It, 1 through 8 came up really easily, but I couldn't find 9. But it was very long, so I was in it for a while, but.
I, I just, I'm afraid we're not the governing body there. And so if somebody is truly interested, I would recommend that they reach out to the county to find out what conflicts there might be.
And I think if, you know, someone probably wouldn't look at this policy if they were considering running for the board. But we would, we would want to research it each time. And I think that would be, kind of goes back to their obligation and then ours. I'm not sure that listing it out would be helpful, to be quite honest.
Yeah, even if we had them as a reference, the DuPage County Election Board, just to get ahead if someone came to us with a concern.
Yeah, I, I didn't go, I went to the code when I researched the ones. I didn't go to the DuPage County Board. I, you know, that's, I mean, that's where I, I went to the, I went to the reference, the Illinois Code.
Trying to think what verbiage we would put in there, say, please go to the election commission or whatever. I think, first of all, someone had to, who's going for the board would have to look into it to know to look there, which is usually kind of.
Right, right.
And say, when I ran, I never went through every policy. So I'm just curious, what language would we put in there that would be, give clear directions, that person where to look?
Does the DuPage County Election Board figure that out when you file to run? Or do we, if someone's running, we're like, hey, so-and-so, you're on the Park District Board? That doesn't work.
We had situations where, when we were filling a vacancy.
Yeah.
And that person indicated the other things they do. And we, and we said that would be a, in that case, one was thinking of was not a conflict. It was another, it was on the library board.
And we had a board member who wanted to be on the park board. And so in researching, we said you would have to resign from the board in order to do that. So I think it's kind of a case-by-case basis. And I don't, I really don't know that they would go to that reference there.
And I just don't know how we'd articulate, again, how clearly what they would need to go to do that, other than kind of regional meetings, complying with the Article 23 of the school code. So there is a.
Wouldn't it be incumbent on them, anyway, to do their due diligence and researching it? Because if it comes before us, and we say, you know, you can't be on two boards, we, you know, we'll notice the conflict. Or if there isn't any, then there isn't one. But then that seems to be putting the onus of responsibility on, you know, you know, I don't want to say the board, but on us to vet for them whether or not, you know, they can or cannot have a second public office.
In both cases where it came up, the individuals did research it. I just researched it so that I also was, you know, that our board would also be, have the information available. So.
Be informed, yeah.
Yeah, I read this as what the onus on us is. That's what I'm reading this policy as, like, what we're responsible for.
Dan, I'll let you decide on that.
And who, where the onus of responsibility is?
No, whether, whether we'd want to be expanding the language or just having the code there.
Or even just by saying, to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis or something. It just, it's gray, and I could see how it could become a point of contention.
I will also just add that in neither case did anybody reference policy when, when they asked. They were more concerned about pretty much the logistics of filing for, to be on the board or to, or wanting to be appointed. So I don't think they referred back to policy. It's always good for us to refer back to policy, and that's where the code comes in. So.
So I look at this, being that we're not coming up with any specific language to put in here, and sorry for my pausing. I was kind of rereading it really quickly to figure, you know, number nine, acceptance of second public office that is incompatible with the board membership. And that's what's there. So I think if somebody is looking to be on the school board, if they so happen to be going through policy and come across this, I'd hope number nine would, they would then have the responsibility to say, okay, is this compatible with something that I'm already on? Or if it's a existing board member, hopefully they, through all our review, they know about this policy, to know, hey, I want to be on this board over here. Is it compatible? So, because it goes both ways. If you're on the board already, you kind of need to know policy, you know? If you're completely new, I don't think, probably take the rare candidate that goes through all policy, you know, every policy and really absorbs it for recall, you know? But hopefully this one would stand out, because it's a, for vacancies, if they're following.
Let me try and ask, what would you suggest, Kate? How, how would it be, other than to refer to the Illinois Code, which is what is at the bottom?
Yeah, I looked through the code, and I was hoping the answer would be in there. And I couldn't, 1 through 8 were perfectly aligned, but 9 wasn't in there. So, but it makes sense to me that it's in there. I just wanted to make sure that we were, because I would think that if we were saying no to someone, that they couldn't fill a vacancy, right? Because this is like what our obligation is, to fill a vacancy. And we say, we don't feel this office is compatible with being on the school board as well, and that's why we're not moving forward, that we would just have a point of reference or something structured so that they couldn't say, well, I feel like, that, you know, that wasn't consistent. I, like, your example of the Park District, very fair, because we share resources. That would be a conflict of interest. I'm sure there's other, plenty of other boards where they have no interaction with us. There would be no conflict of interest. So it'd be a non-issue. I just want to make sure that we have something that speaks of the consistency.
I was able to find the information under the code for the library, which is what the other, the other question that had come up fairly recently, anyway, within the last few years.
Does it seem like we need further research to come back to later? Do we, so you want to propose some language, and we can do this one at the next meeting? Or just we'll accept changes as presented, or?
Are we all, oh, sorry, I was just going to say, are we all in agreement that this is something we would discuss and decide when someone's filling a board vacancy?
We have, yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so this is a case-by-case basis?
Yeah.
I mean, should we look and see if there's any deeper on the law?
Search the Illinois Code at the bottom and find, I mean, we can bring that back and see if that's explicit enough for second reading.
I can, we can look again. I looked through it. Like I said, it wasn't very, that portion wasn't very clear. The rest was very clear.
That would probably be the only, that would probably be the best source, is that. So.
Okay, so we'll come back at second reading, have a further discussion on this, and see if we can find a source that we can reference in here for people to go to.
Well, and just see what the Illinois Code says. That is referenced.
That is, sounds good. Okay, moving on to Policy 2:1, sorry, 2:125, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. Four board members are, accept changes as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, accept changes as presented?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Policy 2:160, Board Attorney. We had four board members, accept changes as presented. No questions for administration. Any discussion or accept changes as presented? All right. All right. Policy 4:15, Identity Protection, we had two board members respond with accept changes as presented. We did have a suggested change to say, where's the superintendent in second par, in third paragraph, to say, add or designate. Everybody good with adding?
Yeah, just because we've done that in several of the.
It's, it's also in, it's in one other place in, in this policy, so that's why I brought it up.
Yep. All right, we had three board members request that, so, okay. So accept changes as presented with language change for, or designate. All right, and Policy 4:80, Accounting and Audits, four board members, accept changes as presented. With one board member suggests also adding or designate after the superintendent in several places where it isn't listed. I think it makes sense. All good? Great, see, not any hints. All right, Policy 5:180, Temporary Illness or Temporary Incapacity. Three board members responded with accept changes as presented. No questions for administration. Any discussion? Everyone good? Okay, great. And Policy 5:290, Employment Termination and Suspensions. One board member responded, accept changes presented. One board member also pointing out to add or designate after the superintendent in the fourth, sixth, and seventh paragraphs. And then one board member said, under suspension, when is a dismissal hearing warranted? And I think that was probably, I put in the wrong column, Dr. Catalik.
Can, can I ask, do we, under the non-RF dismissal, the paragraph starting with the superintendent is responsible, do, should we have, should we leave that responsibility with the superintendent? Or would a designee, I guess, in, the assistant superintendent would be the other designee, but I just felt that level probably warranted the superintendent. But I'm not sure what everybody else thinks.
So my, I agree with you on that, except for what, if there's an instance where, for some reason, we have no superintendent, like, and there's someone having to make decisions, that would be a designee at that point, or?
Yeah, that was my other, my concern, is what if, what if superintendent is, you know, incapacitated for some reason?
Okay. Doesn't the assistant superintendent assume the responsibilities of the superintendent if the superintendent is absent or unable to make decisions?
That's true, so then it.
Well, so would, I have never had that happen while I was on the board. If, you know, the superintendent was, you know, out for months or whatever, do we then do a letter saying that, you know, the assistant superintendent in all, you know, regards, acts as superintendent to align with policy? When they, when the assistant makes decisions?
Yeah, I think if we have a superintendent that's incapacitated, there's probably some procedures, you know, that the assistant superintendent gets.
Yeah, because if that doesn't happen, then nothing happens.
Right, right, so I think we're.
So like, with that in mind, I would agree that that level of decision should be, remain for the superintendent.
I would too.
Good, okay.
And wouldn't that be in Dr. Catalik's job description too, that she would just, she would have to take over? Yeah. So we should be covered.
Okay, good. So we'll add the language before or designate, and under suspension, do we answer the question, when is dismissal hearing warranted?
No, we didn't. I mean, I am asking that question, because it talks about, under suspension, it talks about a hearing, and I'm, I'm wondering, when is a dismissal hearing warranted?
Really a question for administration?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I had the wrong column. Okay, fix that, okay.
No, don't you? You've got it in the right, or?
I put it under.
Okay.
Wrong one, so. I know, Dr. Lipiak, Dr. Catalik, you could speak to when a dismissal hearing is warranted? Okay. Okay. Did I answer your question?
If, if that's the situation, yes, if that's a.
Okay. Okay, so any other discussion on this? Or we'll accept changes as presented, with the language change for or designate? Great. We've gone to Policy 5:310, Compensatory Time Off. Three board members indicate accept changes as presented. One board member had a question, how often is comp time off approved and used? Can all employees earn comp time off? How often has unused comp time been paid upon termination of employee?
I think that goes under questions for administration also.
Yes, I did have that in the wrong column.
Do we use, I mean, how often is comp time off used?
We do allow non-bargaining members, I'm sorry, seal members to accrue compensation time. How often is it approved and used? I would say there are some people that accrue that time instead of getting overtime pay. So then it could be paid out in that situation, or used by the employee, and it's only available in the calendar year from July 1 to June 30. So if it's accrued, they either have to have it paid out, or they have to use it by June 30. And it's, you know, dependent on, you know, situations. If there's heavy snow removal, for example, or people that have to clean sidewalks may have to come in early, they would be eligible for comp time or overtime.
Is there a limit on the amount of comp time that can be earned in a year then?
Yes, it's 40 hours, so one week.
Okay. And it would have to be used in that year also?
Correct, or paid out.
Thank you.
All right.
Would an employee have to initiate that payout, or does it automatically get paid out if they haven't used it?
If they have not used it, it's automatically paid out. I was just reminded it was 45 hours for.
I'll correct my note.
Thank you.
All right, so any further discussion on this, whether we'll accept changes as presented?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. All right, moving on to Policy 6:110, Programs for Students at Risk of Academic Failure and/or Dropping Out of School and Graduation Incentives Program. Four board members indicate accept changes as presented. There was a question to administration, I think they added, there was a question, that they'd like to update guidance counselor to school counselor.
Correct, that's just a more common term.
Any discussion, or accept changes presented, including the language change suggested by the administration? Excellent. Policy 6:150, Home and Hospital Instruction. Four board members indicate accept changes as presented. Any discussion? Okay, accept changes as presented. Policy 7:170, Vandalism. Also, four board members responded, accept changes as presented. Any discussion? Accept changes as presented, all right.
Real quick, Dan, the 7190, that would include if we have to do any, like, criminal pressing of charges, if there was significant damage?
717?
It references 7190.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that would cover if we have to include police, all right, thank you.
All right, so those are part of Policy 1, Press Pocket 115. Then we had two additional policies for annual, for review. Policy 7:180, Prevention and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment. Three board members accept changes as presented. One board member, accept changes presented, but changed Chef Howard to the new principal. And administration responded that it's already updated in the policy manual. Great. I also had a question about, what is our bullying prevention and response plan? Administration responds, outlined in the, outlined in 6:40 of Student Handbook. There was a question from a board member on page nine, press plus comments, press plus one. Can a summary of non, of the non-identifiable data reported to ISBE begin August 2025 to be shared with the board? Administration responded, yes. At this time, we do not know the details regarding the data collection, but can share the final report after the August 2025, when it is due.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, accept changes as presented. Feeling good with that? Knowing the change for the high school principals already been done, okay. Then Policy 7:190, Student Behavior. Three board members respond, accept changes presented. We did have a question from one board member, using or processing a cellular phone unless authorized and approved by the building, building principal. Is use of cell phones authorized at each school? How do the building principals ensure the cell phones are not used as video recording devices? Administration responded, junior high and high school allow students to have them, but they are supposed to be off and out of sight during school hours unless special permission is given to them. Elementary do not allow cell phones, they are to be turned off and in backpacks, lockers. Consequences are issued for inappropriate use. Note, this is very hard to manage, and there are likely offenders, but the school monitors best as they can.
You know, this is a, has become a national topic, and is it something that we might want to talk about? I know other schools have, like, cubbyholes in each classroom, where the cell phones just go in when they go into the class, and they, of course, pick them up when they go back. I just wondered if that might be a future topic, that be good to get input from administration, from, from teachers? I think that's a, how about the two teachers on the board? Would you see that as a?
Absolutely see it as a very important topic for us to talk about.
Absolutely.
And definitely, I think we can follow some of the national and state-level news that's happening on this topic.
I think there's a, a major city out west that is just, the school district there is just banned cell phones. So, yeah, they're, they're definitely a distraction, so I'd like to have some more conversation on that topic.
Okay, I would be curious too. I know they, you know, like, even at the elementary school, I've, I've heard there was a storm, you know, I, they were all into the gym at one point, and they didn't have cell phones, but they had watches, so the parents could, so, you know, that incorporates into the discussion too.
You're saying almost like the type of device, not just the cellphone, yeah? And then, it'd be also interesting following what other parts of the nation are doing, because it's going to have the same sort of legal lawsuit, you know, lawsuits saying, my kid should be, it's freedom of whatever, you know, they should have a right to have this, you know? So I think we kind of let other precedents happen, and then learn from that.
Oh, there's, there's high schools that have it now.
Are they, okay.
Yeah, definitely. So, you know, I think, I think at the junior high level is where it's maybe even most important, to be quite honest, so.
I would agree.
It is really difficult to manage, though, and does require a lot of time from deans, assistants, principals, that level of administration.
Just from another perspective, if you look across the nation at some of the violent events that have happened in school buildings, a lot of times, law enforcement's contacted by kids who are in the classroom via their own cell phones. So I understand it's a distraction, I don't disagree with that, but with that safety piece involved, I, I think, if, you know, there, there's going to have to be some policing in the classroom, but I would not feel comfortable telling kids to give their phones away. I'd want my kids to be in a building with a phone where they could call for help if they were in a situation where they felt they needed it.
I'm thinking more of the mental health issues, and that's where it's come to play so, so prevalently now. But let's have that, if we have it as a future board member, or future agenda item for discussion, we can talk about all the pros and cons, so, and maybe get some presentations on it.
Okay, we have a second question. How is number nine regarding the use of AI writing service monitored? Is, AI is, administration has responded, AI is not allowed for 13 and under, so it is not utilized at LES. Junior high and high school staff will be learning more on this this year. In order to help students with AI appropriate as a tool for learning and productivity, new curriculum materials are starting to build AI features into their programs. Any other discussion on this?
Does, how is this policy written regarding AI? I guess is, how does number nine read? Let's see, because I thought it said that it limits it.
Well, it says specifically authorized by staff, so it can use.
Does it, is that what it says?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to scroll back up, so, okay. Okay. Well, I'm sure, you know, you'd said before, Lynda, that the staff is going to get, receive some training on AI, so, okay.
But it's interesting, just a scan of our, of our policy, and artificial intelligence is mentioned once. So I'm curious if we should obviously consider future discussion on the use of AI, academic honesty, the use of it. I mean, it's a great tool. I use it almost every day for work.
Maybe when the teachers, I, you know, when are they scheduled for discussions?
All buildings are working on AI learning, presentation, giving teachers tools for AI.
Okay.
Many of us, there were, four or five of us that, bless you, four or five of us that attended an AI conference in DuPage County about a month ago. Got some great tools and some connections. It's, it's really something that is being addressed in schools all over. And the big key is, we can't really avoid it. We have to be educated ourselves, and also educate students, and, and as I said, how to use it as a tool for productivity and learning. I think, think about, you know, 15 years ago, or whatever, when we were afraid of the internet, like, what it would do to education and to teachers and, and learning. And it's, it's a process, we just, we just have to continue to grow with the new things that come out, and AI is, is that thing right now, and we have to roll with it and learn and use it as a tool.
I think we have to prepare them for college too, and obviously, that's going to be a big tool that you send. It would just be nice to kind of, after they get their training, if we could, you know, hear some information on it.
Might be a good topic for the school improvement plans.
Mm-hmm.
Discussing.
Hmm, interesting.
Instruction.
All right, any further discussion on this? Okay, we accept changes as presented then?
Okay.
And that concludes policy.
I think seven, as I'd mentioned before, 71, the depth of seven, and the content of 7180 and 7190 just kind of outlines many of the differences in our schools at this point, and many of the laws and regulations that govern that, so it's, it's consuming. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Self-Evaluation is our next topic, 8B, Under Discussion Items. And there's a link on there to the different items that are available. Our last board workshop was with our ISBE, IASB rep, was on September 18 of '23. And because we have a new board member now, it would, we'd probably be looking at Starting Right, but that's what we did last time, so we just want to have one, another one before next July. But I don't know if you had a chance, if you clicked on to see, there's, we haven't done a board self-evaluation in a while, and that's a good tool. I think what's probably been four years since that, I'd have to look it up. But if you would like, I'd be glad to talk to Arlana, our IASB rep, and see if she has any suggestions, and she knows what we've done. And other than the Trust Edge Experience, I think we've done all of these that I can remember, probably. You know, not all with the current board, but certainly along the line. Is there anything on the list that jumps out for, that I could talk with her about? Otherwise, I will explain that, you know, Kate, you, we did Starting Right when you joined the board, and now with Paula joining, we can figure out what might be best. So if you want, I will be glad to do that, unless somebody has something that they see on here.
One of the ones that stood out to me, when we wrapped up the one last fall, they talked a lot about data and using that more, and there was a monitoring district goals using data on here. I think that's a growth opportunity. We've talked about a few times, and I know that it's kind of a daunting task, so it just might be a useful workshop for all of us to attend.
Let me, if you would, I, you know, you want to look at the definition of it, because we, we did this one years ago, and it was, it was not exceptionally valuable, let me put it that way, because it wasn't, it was so generic, it wasn't geared towards what we're looking at. But that being said, Arlana sat through that conversation with us, and I could get her input on that, so I'll, I'll check that one out.
Is there an option to work with Arlana to say, do they offer some of that's not on the list? Even something customized? I mean, she knows us, I think, well enough at this point, for we have various years of tenure here, or months. of tenure here, or months, so some of that can fit and also be valuable.
I'll definitely ask her. I am fairly confident that they stick with this schedule, because they have a, you know, they kind of have a shtick that they do, and they do this for other schools as well, so, but I will ask that question, Dan.
And even if she had input, I mean, we met with her a couple times, she knows us, see, she knows our makeup, personality, of what might make more sense, I'm going to that suggestion.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk with her and bring that back to the next board meeting then, and see what she says. I think, you know, we'd probably, this is a very, you know, the next two months are very busy, but what we found in the past, that really December was a good time to do it, because that was not as, as busy, if we could schedule, the other factor to consider is her availability, so, okay, I'll bring those, some options back to us for.
I'd almost try to get her on the calendar, and then choose the topic if that happens to be the order.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's.
I was just going to throw out one more suggestion.
You bet.
The equity one, I think equity is such a big focus nowadays, anything we can do with equity would be great, I think, for all of us.
And we've, we've done that one, I don't know, remember, if you remember, that was via Zoom for some of us, but I'll, I'll see if that's switched around, because we were actually the first ones to receive that, so it was a new, a new course, and that, that might have, have impacted that, but there was a lot of good research and reading material, but beyond that, but I'll ask, there might be some enhancements to that, and that's always an important topic, and if everybody hasn't, we can always do it again.
Yeah, see how much it's been revamped?
Yeah.
I think obviously they had revamped it for a, a, a Google meet, or a, a video conference, but potentially they've also evolved it further, since again, we were one of the first, or the first to have it, so.
There was a lot of good conversations in it, I guess, I don't know that it was directed necessarily for issues at, at school, but I think it was, it was an important thing to listen to, so, we'll check that one out too, Kate, thanks. Okay. Go on to item eight C then, which is a Freedom of Information Request, those are in the board packet, and both responded to. Eight D is our public comment follow-up, and there were no public comment last time, which brings us to eight E, which is a superintendent's report.
Pretty short report, with it being summer, but summer school is in process. The junior high is temporarily at Lyle Elementary because of all the construction. If you are looking for a tour, I would definitely invite you to look at these gutted buildings now, I think a few of our board members had a chance to see them, any feedback in terms of what you saw?
I was impressed with how much they had gutted so fast, like, they got a lot of that out of there, and they have it already all prepped for the new classrooms, and how many, how much bigger the windows are, and not leaking, like.
I think, I think the thing that kept, I noticed most is the area that used to be central, and also the boardroom, I'm really excited to see what those look like for sixth grade classrooms, so it's, it's coming along, I don't mean to jinx us, but definitely, like you said, the amount of window space compared to what was, I think, has almost tripled in many cases, and so they're plugging away, and so far on time, on budget, and so we'll keep moving forward. And then, at some of the schools that aren't being renovated, there's a ton of curriculum and professional development, and so it's, oftentimes people think this is a time for the teachers to take a break, but there's actually a lot of collaborating that happens, a lot of professional development, and so if any given day you drive by and see a bunch of cars, it's because a lot of our staff is still here. And that concludes my superintendent's report for the month of June.
Okay, thank you very much. Brings us to item nine, which is our committee reports, nine A, facility master planning did not meet, the finance, nine B, finance committee met?
The finance committee met today at six thirty, we, oh, we didn't, pardon, we didn't approve anything, but there were spirit deductions on a number of topics.
Okay. Several were referred to the regular agenda, then for approval tonight, under consent. Very good, okay, policy, seems like we were just there.
Yes, yes, so I think you can refer to the agenda for all the policies that we reviewed tonight, and the items we accepted changes on, and then next month we will have second reading on them.
Excellent, thank you. Vision two oh two, I believe there was, there was a meeting in, in May, Dr. Lippiak?
In May, the committee had looked at a variety of questions we wanted to have for the junior high students, and so a survey was sent out to all students, we received two hundred and seven results, or responses, I should say, and then the administrative team had a chance to meet with about twenty students in small focus groups, just to kind of get their more detailed feedback on what's working, what's not working, what would you like to see different, and so we'll give a formal presentation of that information at our July meeting.
Do you feel that was a good source of information to send out the, probably more than we got last time, maybe?
I think the students are why we're here each and every day, and to have an opportunity to hear directly from them is huge, and so we will do this on a regular basis, sometimes more formal, sometimes less formal, I wanted to make sure that we also, you know, not only wanted to meet with the most vocal students, but those that maybe are considered invisible in the organization, and so I think we had a nice cross-section of those students that we're willing to meet. And then I think the next area and similar student focus is at the high school, we've got two new administrators there, and so I think this is going to be a great chance for them in the first quarter to be able to get to know the administrators, administrators get to know them, but then, most importantly, like, what, what's working, what's not working, what would you like to see different, what do you want to have exactly the same, so that'll be something we do probably first quarter of the new school year, and then we'll report soon after.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, board representative reports, HSO did not meet, ISB delegate to board did not meet, intergovernmental did not meet, Lenn did not meet, and Lyle Education Foundation, the golf outing was in June, I believe there were seventy-eight golfers, it was a very, very warm day, but it was a good day, so, not sure on the total amount of, of revenue from that yet, but it was a, we had a lot of, one of the really good things, a lot of elementary parents participated this year, which is a, a new group, so that was exciting to see. Let's see, SACID did not meet, and then agenda topics for future board meetings. I believe we, we talked about use of cell phones in the schools would be a topic to, to bring back, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in July, but, you know, if we could, you know, maybe bring back in August, or whatever is easiest. Just kind of talk about pros and cons with it. Love to hear the teachers' input on it as well. Was there another topic you had, Dan? I think, I thought you had a.
I had one last, last month, for looking at, for like, job aids or role aids together.
Okay, was there any other topics for future? Okay, all right, we'll bring that one back. Okay, and that brings us to item twelve, which is, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for discussion of the appointment, performance discipline, compensation or dismissal of employees, and collective bargaining matters?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. DiDomenico?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson, aye, and Ms. Allman?
Aye, so we will now adjourn to closed session at eight fifty PM, thank you.